Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, August 21st. I will note for the record that Commissioner Madira and myself, Commissioner Thomas, are here and present in the Nat U Hill Room, and we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to move the work session item from Fleet and Facilities to our regular agenda, and it would become Agenda Item H.
Any second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. And with that, we'll move on to our department updates. I believe we have the Health Department joining us. Ms. Kelly?
Good morning, Commissioners. As of August 19th, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness have continued to increase, and wastewater concentrations are also continuing to trend upwards. The Indiana Department of Health has learned of more than 10 infant deaths related to unsafe sleep in the month of August. As a reminder, the Health Department offers free safe sleep training and resources. Individuals can call 812-349-2075 for more information. And our Public Health Clinic has vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment or more information.
All right. Thank you so much for the timely information. That is really a big number. Appreciate the outreach. Commissioner Madira, comments or questions?
Were these in the state, I guess?
Yes, so across the state of Indiana, over 10.
Oh, that is terrible. Thank you so much for that information.
I'm glad you have the programming in place. I hope parents take advantage of it.
Absolutely. All preventable. Thank you.
All right. Any other departments have an update for us? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, our next item is public comment. This is time reserved for items not on our agenda. We ask each speaker to limit themselves to three minutes per person. Please give us your name and county of residence before you begin speaking. May raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium here in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, please.
I would like to move to approve the minutes for August 14th, 2025.
Second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
I have none. Thank you.
All right. I don't either. All those in favor of approving the minutes for August 14th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move to approve the claims docket for accounts payable from August 21st, 2025, and for payroll from August 22nd, 2025.
Second. Ms. Moser, please.
Good morning. Good morning. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for August 21st, 2025 totals $9,478,223.21. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for August 22nd, 2025 includes $1,582,601.74 in direct costs, and the remaining $675,689.87 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $2258,291.61.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
I have none. Thank you.
No, I don't either. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any public comment on this item? You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket, accounts payable August 21st, 2025, and payroll August 22nd, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. We don't have any reports, so we will move on to new business, and the first item, please.
I would like to move approval of the VET Environmental Engineering LLC mitigation systems inspections for Monroe County buildings, fund name county general, fund number 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $26,350.87.
Second, Mr. Kreider.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building Fleet Manager. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Vet Environmental Engineering LLC to perform inspections on mitigation systems at the following locations: The Johnson Hardware Building, Charlotte Ziegler Justice Center, Monroe County Courthouse, and the Monroe County Health Building. The term is 24 months, in an amount not to exceed $26,350.87. The scope includes 23 monthly inspections of the site-specific mitigation system components installed, plus condition of the vapor barriers with a biennial inspection and testing on the 24th month. It also includes an OM and M plan for the health building, a system upgrade for the health building to include decals and an alarm, plus post-mitigation testing at the courthouse.
What clarification? This is for radon, correctly? Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Madira?
Can you go into more detail about the alarm in particular?
Yeah. There is alarms installed on our newer equipment. If a motor were to fail and the system becomes out of balance, it'll set off an alarm, and you know that you need to get some maintenance work and repair work on that motor.
Excellent. So it's good to have advanced warning if any of the system should fail?
Yep.
Thank you.
And you're talking about the systems that are in place to move radon out of buildings?
Yes.
Yes. That's what you're specifically talking about.
All the pipes you see, those have motors that are pulling.
Like fans, yeah, almost. Yeah, got it. Excellent. All right. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Vet Environmental Engineering mitigation systems inspections for Monroe County buildings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the Luddy Coding Camp Memorandum of Understanding, fund name county general, fund number 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $3,500.
Second, Ms. Turner King.
Good morning. What's before you today is a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Commissioners and the trustees of IU to allow our Women's Commission to partner with the Luddy School to provide a website design camp for middle schoolers that will allow them to have firsthand experience and apply some STEM skills. Sorry. The Women's Commission's role in this camp will be they will serve as camp ambassadors. They'll interact with the campers, support, enthusiasm, and then they will be organizing the end of the camp ceremony. And IU will be providing curriculum, volunteers, site location, pretty much the rest of the camp.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
And just to clarify, I believe this camp will be open to students of all genders?
Correct.
Yes. And this is a summer camp, correct?
I think their idea is to do it in the fall.
Okay.
But we would have to work with Luddy and the Women's Commission to agree upon dates.
Excellent. Well, I think this sounds terrific. Thank you.
I'm glad we're able to do this again. Any public comment on this item? You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Luddy Coding Camp MOU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Thank you.
And as a next step, the trustees will be considering the contract.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval to award the untreated salt bid to Morton Salt Incorporated. Fund name local road and street, fund number 1169, in the amount of $92.06 or $90 per ton, delivered or picked up.
Second, Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. So we opened bids. I believe we had received three bids on this item for materials. So we would like to award it to the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, which was Morton Salt.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
No. Excellent. This is a very, very important, actually, service. I'm very grateful that we use salt instead of cinder. I think it's a very, a lot more effective and a lot easier on our cars and other vehicles, and I'm grateful.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding untreated salt bid to Morton Salt, Inc., signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for GAI Consultants, Incorporated On-Call Hourly Agreement, fund names cumulative bridge and local road and street, fund numbers 1135 and 1169, in the amount of $250 per hour as needed.
Second, Ms. Ridge.
So we have different on-call hourly contracts with different consultants that we fill that can, we could utilize their services in different ways. GAI would be a good source for us for some of our bridge. Not necessarily work, maybe some guidance on different directions we can go. So we wanted to bring them on board for an hourly contract to use as needed.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
I would just like to establish that this is the, as far as I know, this is the market rate. This is, seems a very reasonable hourly rate, as far as I know, for engineering consulting.
Thank you for organizing this in advance. Appreciate it. All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the GAI Consultants, Inc. On-Call Hourly Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for High-Tink Architectural Venires and Plywood Agreement for Sunrise Greetings Court, fund name local road and street, fund number 1169, in the amount of $44,920.20.
Second, Ms. Ridge.
So during our Sunrise Greetings Extension Project, we found a private utility line that was running under Sunrise Greetings Court. So we did a little research on the pipe, and it does go to High-Tink. It's a private line, only serves High-Tink. So to protect the pipe, protect our new road, we went ahead and encased the pipe during the construction project, but then also we worked with High-Tink to split that cost with them. And also in the agreement, any future maintenance of this line, any, if there was need to be a road tuck, road boring or anything, that's all going to be under the expense of the property owner with High-Tink, of High-Tink.
That's to me. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
No, just thank you for handling this matter expeditiously and minimizing costs to the county.
It's going to be, looks like everything's done out there. I was just out there the other day. Yeah.
It's very close. They're going to do striping. I think they're seeding and struing. They're doing project cleanup right now, so hopefully we will have that open in the next couple of weeks. We will be organizing and ribbon cutting for that one also.
Yay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Any public comment on this item? You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the High-Tink Architectural Venires and Plywood Agreement for Sunrise Greeting Court, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for N.DOT Change Order Number 2 for the pedestrian trail crossings, fund name local road and street, fund number 169.
Second, Ms. Ridge, tell us about this.
That's actually, I believe, 8169. It's a grant fund.
Yeah. I think, yep. 8169, fund number. Got it.
So the change order, there is no cost to this change order. It's actually for a project delay and timeline, so that the calculation of liquidated damages can occur. And typically, you would have the contractor sign this change order before coming to the board. However, the contractor at this time does not agree with the change order. But per N.DOT instructions, they wanted us to keep the process moving forward so that the county and N.DOT could, we could get, retrieve those signatures on the change order. And if you want to see a full description on how the days are calculated, it's all descriptive in the change order.
It is all there. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
Nope. This sounds self-explanatory. Thank you.
Yeah. So I think the fund number is 1169.
1169.
For local road and street. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So I don't, I don't have any questions. I guess this just is record-keeping to keep everybody aware of time delays. It goes on the record of the vendor and, yeah.
There could be liquidated damages involved, so we wanted to make sure that we had everything on our end in order to assess that.
Got it. Thank you. Any public comment on this item? You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving N.DOT Change Order Number 2 for pedestrian trail crossings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for Open Gov Agreement for Asset Management for Highway and Stormwater. Fund names Motor Vehicle Highway, Cumulative Bridge, and Stormwater. Fund numbers 1176, 1135, and 1197, in the amount of $154,493.94 for a three-year agreement.
Second, Ms. Ridge, please tell us all about this one.
So, it is. So we do use this asset management program. We use it for a lot more. It's a good tracking system for us. We use it for legal purposes, for any activity that we do, any investigation that we do, any public complaint request. So we use that for everything. We also use it for our asset management for our pavement that we're required to keep for our LTAP annual report that we submit, and also for grant funds that we are to have the asset management plan updated, everything inspected every two years. We also use it for stormwater inlets, outfalls, our signs, our culverts, our traffic signals. It's just one, one place that we can utilize everything. We've used this program before when it was cartographed since 1996, and we've just grown with it. It serves our needs at this point. Worked with Greg Kron, had him look at everything. He approves us as still using this software program. It's a little, it is pricey for a three-year agreement, but we do split that between three budgets. Our bridge crew uses it for also our bridge work, stormwater, and then our everyday highway crews. So it's, it's very, it's a very valuable asset for us.
Yeah. It, it's, it is a really good system. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madira?
I know. Thank you for explaining, you know, just how it's spread across three budgets, and it sounds like basically it's an essential service for our county.
See if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Open Gov Agreement for Asset Management for Highway and Stormwater, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries 2-0. We will now move on to Item H, which is from our work session list.
Yes, I would like to move approval for Fleet and Facilities, HFI Water Heater Replacement at the MC Monroe County Convention Center, fund name ARPA, fund number 8950, in the amount of $21,050.
Second, Mr. Kreider.
Hello, Commissioners. Thanks for moving me to the formal section. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by HFI in the amount of $21,050 to replace the failed kitchen water heater at the Monroe County Convention Center. HFI will furnish all necessary materials to connect the new water heater to the existing piping and wiring. Check for leaks, verify operation, and remove the failed water heater from the facility. The manufacturer will provide a limited one-year warranty on parts, and HFI will provide, provide a, I'm sorry, provide a one-year limited warranty on installation.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Madira?
I have none. This is essential to have for a convention center because kitchens need water heaters.
For sure. These are, these seem like really short warranties, but I think it's because of the commercial application here. Yeah. All right. Any, it's nice to see an ARPA thing here every once in a while. Keeps, reminds us of all the good that, that was done in Monroe County. Any public comment on this item? You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harrowfish Incorporated HFI Water Heater Replacement Monroe County Convention Center, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We do have an appointment?
Yes. We would like to move to appoint Michael Teague, Dr. Michael Teague, to the Health Board, given the resignation of Diane Neal.
Second, we'll have to find those term dates for the letter, and I'm grateful that we have somebody willing to step up, so that's really good. All those in favor of approving Dr. Teague to the Health Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. All right. Thank you so much. We'll start our announcements. Ms. Purdy, if you want to offer an update on everything moldy in the world.
Not really. Excuse me. So, just to kind of recap and help, excuse me, everyone understand where we're at with the Justice Building. We actually have been dealing with damp, wet conditions within that facility for a while this year. There's been a lot of activity trying to get the humidity down and things of that nature. And as the humidity was high and as we had water leaking from the ductwork, it just made a perfect environment for mold. And so this all kind of came to a head at the beginning of August. And at that time, the maintenance at the Justice Building reached out and asked if we could have some mold testing conducted by Vet Environmental on the third floor. We did that. While we were doing that, we heard from the second floor, the prosecutor's office, that they had concerns. So that was also approved to get those, have that testing done. So initially, for the third floor, the results were, let me see if I actually have it, but it was based on, and I'm taking this from a report that I got from Vet Environmental, based on observations and analytical results, mold was present on surfaces sampled on the third floor of the building. One indoor air sample exhibited elevated levels of the airborne Aspergillus penicillium spores. However, total fungi levels for all indoor air samples were reported as acceptable. So we got that report. We had every intention of continuing to go forward and fogging that space during that time. So we received that report on August 11th. On August 15th, Vet Environmental contacted our maintenance manager at the Justice Building and advised that there was a fungal spore in one office, one of the offices in the Justice Building, and that that fungal spore, I'm not even going to try to say his name, it's like Becky, Statchi, Statchi, Statchi Potrees. I don't know. Bad guy. He is the black mold that people hear about and don't want anything to do with. We were advised that the occupant of that office needed to vacate, and for, just to be safe, that the two adjoining offices should also vacate. So that was the 15th, which is the last Friday. So that was communicated. Staff did what they needed to do. And then Vet Environmental came in and actually flogged the prosecutor's space over that weekend. That was the 16th. They came, Vet came back in on Monday, tested the prosecutor's space. Monday, we began the, well, they had actually already been doing this on the third floor, but it became a much more invasive approach to removing ceiling tiles. The mold that has been detected has been in the ceiling tiles. And so every ceiling tile that had any kind of discoloration on it, it was being removed and replaced. We started that on Monday. Tuesday, we were going into it, and that's when we realized that trying to remove ceiling tiles while the court's in session, while people are in their offices trying to work on, you know, serious and sensitive cases, was not conducive to either entity's efficiency in doing their, doing their, doing their work. So the prosecutor actually reached out to me and asked about the possibility of closing the building. I asked her to speak with the presiding judge because the courts generally have to keep on going, and that was, you know, that's definitely the situation. However, everybody understood that it was going to be easier and faster for our people to be able to get in there, do the tile remediation, sweep, and then prepare for another test. So that was done. So Tuesday, people went, left the building. Wednesday, they were not in the building, and that, everybody was able to do that. Well, on Wednesday, we also chose to test every office in the Justice Building and the sheriff and jail facility. I spoke with Vet Environmental this morning, and I believe, I can't remember, she said they have 74 or 79 samples. Those are in Indy right now from that building. And so people are back in. Staff who are immunologically compromised were advised to contact their supervisor because no mold is safe. And I've not heard from anybody regarding that particular situation. So the plan at this point is all the ceiling tiles have been remediated, testing has been conducted. Vet Environmental is coming in Friday night and Saturday to fog all the necessary areas, and they're going to test on Sunday, so we can have results the following week. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, at this, at this point in time.
No. Thank you for that very thorough explanation.
Yeah. It's, it's good for the public's edification because part of the story gets out, some of it doesn't, whatever. And, yeah, and so none of this, there's a separate air handler. There's a separate system for the jail. So jail staff and inmates were not impacted.
Right. So that's, that is important because when the closure occurred, I, recognizing that it was an accessibility issue, didn't think how the perception would be for the sheriff and the jail. And of course, when everybody's leaving, they say that they're leaving because of mold. No, they're leaving so we can get in and remediate the mold. So no, the jail is on a separate air handler, not affected by any of the work that's going on at this point in time. After speaking with the sheriff, that's when we decided we're going to just go ahead and check the sheriff's area as well as the jail facility. So that's why we went ahead and distested everything yesterday. So I think that, I know that Sarah did not So I think that, I know that Sarah did not identify any active mold in the jail. So she did advise that to me this morning, but she did, they still took samples, and they'll be moving forward with that, so.
Yeah, and that's Ms. Mitovich from Vet Engineering.
Oh, yeah, Vet Environmental.
Yep. Great, thank you. Very thorough, thank you so much. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into all of this. And I know it's been inconvenient for staff, and that everyone at the Justice Building has worked incredibly hard and maintenance to, to keep going as much as possible and keep everybody safe.
Absolutely, and I just, I do want to say, the employees have been fabulous.
Yeah.
You know, I do applaud the person, I know that there had been a complaint filed with OSHA. I mean, we need to know these things, and so, you know, that's, that is not a problem.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing, but I do, I do appreciate the employees. They, they have been supportive through this, and I just, I just really appreciate them.
They've been communicating and keeping us, keeping us in tune with what's going on, and this is just another reminder of why we're co-locating at the new Justice Center. We can't very well keep this building propped up. But I did read somewhere that this is the most humid summer in the Midwest in decades, in decades, and so I'm sure that that limping along HVAC system is, had, is having a hard time, keeping the air dry.
Absolutely, and Vet Environmental will, will state that.
Yeah.
You know, the age of the building, just by the nature of the age, you get, and I, I know more than I ever should have known, but you can get pinpoints, holes in piping, and they leak, and you don't know they're leaking, because it's a pinpoint. And then the only way you know they're leaking is when it shows up on a ceiling tile or something of that nature. So, yeah, this, this building, and I do want to say this, our maintenance staff has done an incredible job of keeping this building standing to date. It, everybody, well, most, we know of the issues and the design of that particular facility, and they have worked the best they can within the limitations of that, of that building.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, and there is a lot of people in the public who might wonder, oh, that building's not as old as, for example, the courthouse that stands in the square, but I mean, let's say there's a uniform, and you have to wear that uniform to work every single day, day in and day out, and that, that uniform's going to wear out a lot more than other pieces of clothing that you might wear just one day a week. And some of the buildings we use a lot less, and the uses for which we use that building might be a lot less arduous, but this building is a jail in part, and it goes through a lot harsher types of wear than other buildings. Jails give out faster than other buildings. They are not, although they're built tougher, they're not built to last necessarily, they need to be replaced. And this is a working jail, as well as a working courthouse, and it had design flaws when it was built. So if members of the public want to know why this building seems to be giving out, not only was it built with certain quirks in, when it was built, but also, it is a working jail, and that is why it is aging faster, perhaps, than it's that uniform that we wear every day.
Quirks is a nice word for it. It's poorly designed. And that's why jail, modern jails typically utilize what we're planning to utilize, which are pre-built, pre-cast cells, because those can then just be replaced as needed.
Right, and I mean, even if you look at jails like Alcatraz, Alcatraz was only in operation for 30 years. So 25, 30 years, that was the life of a federal jail, you know, so this one has been in operation for much longer than that, at higher capacities, so.
All right, so with that, again, thank you, Ms. Purdy, thank you to the maintenance staff at the Justice Center, thank you to our employees for their communication, ongoing communication, and patience and understanding as well. So just a couple of quick announcements. The next blood drive that we're holding at IV Tech will be Wednesday, September 3rd, and Thursday, September 4th, from noon to 6:00 PM, and that is in Room C130A and B at IV Tech. We do have office hours each month, six times each month, where you can speak with one of us directly via Teams. Just go to our county website, which, the new address, IN.gov slash county slash Monroe, and you will be able to find us on the calendar, just join us for a conversation. Just a reminder that as we're in toward the end of August already, which I cannot believe, that it's a good time to think about serving on boards and commissions, so please take a look at the listings on our website. And while you're on our website, be sure to sign up for the Resident Alert System, the Monroe County Alert Notification System. We'll provide information on weather and/or health-related emergencies and updates, and you can sign up for text, phone, or email messaging. Just a reminder, we are going to be closed on September 1st, which is Labor Day, all county offices will be closed. Our next meeting will be here in the Net U Hill Room on Thursday, August 28th, at 10:00 AM. Anything else for the good of the order?
We'd like to welcome back all the IU students.
Oh, yes.
And temporarily, their parents.
Yeah, drive carefully and be patient, that's all we can say. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.